Down in the multipurpose room here in the courthouse for space reasons, the court was planning on using this room for court hearing today, which apparently got canceled or settled. So we moved back up here to the commissioner's room and we're reconvening that meeting. As far as routine business, we had approved the agenda and then we had moved on to wanting to start the board discussion regarding the courthouse design with possible action. So I believe there's people here who are gonna present. Mr. Golden, did you want to say anything initially?
Thank you, Commissioner Landine, yes. This is the initial kickoff meeting for the design of the courthouse. And I have been in discussions with Mr. Strasburg and we have come up with a process to move this along. And you have an agenda that's going to be led by, I believe, the architects here. But the intentions here is for the commission to make some initial decisions and set some guidelines for what your department heads and elected officials are then going to operate under in order to work with the architects in order to assist in the design. So one of the things that I have requested previously, and I would ask now, is I gave you a list of responsibilities for the different departments and the commissions. I had asked everybody to take a look at that. As we go through this process, if there's additions or other people who you think should be included in those meetings or in those areas, that they be identified so that... The intention on our side is we're gonna have pre-meetings in the Lincoln County departments and officials so that we have a general idea and have thought these things through prior to having meetings about the design. And that way, if the commission now sets guidelines, talks about what your expectations are, the areas that you want to see, or what you want to see in the design, that all the department heads will understand what your guidance is, what the parameters are, and what they're working with before we go in and have meetings and we have people go different directions. So that's what, for my side, is what I'm asking.
Do you want us to go through this now, or do you want us to take the time to think about it and come back to you with if we have any changes?
No, that was just intended so that if people see, if you see things that are missing as we start this process, you add them to it.
Okay.
And then that way, when we coordinate the meetings and who needs to be there, we have a list of who it is.
All right, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, then we have representatives from JLG presenting.
Yes, so can I project on the screen?
Did you plug in?
I'm plugged in here.
Oh, you're plugged in.
Yep.
Yep, there you go.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. All right, so as Bill had mentioned, laying out kind of roles, responsibilities, we wanted to do just introductions from our design team. So I will, I'll just kind of introduce, I guess, the whole group, if that's okay. From the JLG side, myself, Lynn Remmers, I'll be the project manager. We have Mike Shaleen, who isn't here with us today because of the weather, but he's our principal on the project. We are partnered with DLR Group as a partner architect, a courts expert. So we have Rob Fish here. And then another name you may be seeing is Todd Orr in the coming meetings. He's DLR's main lead designer, so he'll be coming onto the project. We do have representatives from Henry Carlson Construction, Dave Derry and Mike, which you're not on here, Mike, Mike Ralston. And of course Dick Strasburg, Tegra's owners' rep representing the county. So that is our team. And then we're gonna go through, we kind of want to confirm budget. I have two numbers here. We have construction cost of 37.6 and project cost of 54.8. So more so just want confirmation that these numbers are correct, so we're all on the same page moving forward. Any discrepancies, please let us know. Okay? All right. So as Bill's laid out, we are, as a design team, we're gonna be communicating through Tegra Group, Tegra, and be working with Bill as their main point of contact, and then Bill will be the commissioner's main point of contact. So that's kind of that communication flow that we're gonna start to establish and maintain for the duration of the project. All right, with that, I'll, we'll talk a little bit throughout when we get into more of the process and meetings, but we're gonna talk about some workshop groups. And when we pull different people in to the project, there's gonna be certain times where we want to, for instance, building services, we want, we might want to talk to your janitorial staff, your maintenance staff, and have them be part of that conversation when we're talking HVAC equipment and so on. So there's different groups and different people, and that's kind of part of that list that Bill gave you. So we'll start identifying who those groups of people are and when the right time is to bring them on. All right, I think that's probably good enough for your introduction, otherwise I'll turn it over to Rob and we'll talk through some process.
You want to go to this chart?
Rob, if you can pull that microphone up since we are being recorded, that'd be great.
So I think you have this on the handout, it's probably a little easier to read there, but this is our projected timeline for the design phase. So here we are at the beginning kickoff meeting today, and we anticipate schematic design to be about 12 weeks, so that's about three months. And we have a series of, I'm gonna say, frequent and very involved workshop groups at the beginning of the design process. Once we get the program finalized, the layouts kind of established, a sense of what the building's gonna look like, then we're kind of off to the race, and then a budget check. Can't forget, Dave. Then we're kind of off to the races to complete design. We haven't listed workshops during design development and construction documents. We'll kind of populate that as we go along, but it won't be nearly as involved in terms of your time with the user groups because we will already have all the parameters of the project established, and it's mostly time for us to do our work. And we will have check-ins to just kind of confirm as the design develops more, to just kind of show you what it's looking like, and also to do a budget check-in. So we'll probably do, I think we're doing an estimate, what at each phase, Dave? So each, kind of near the end of each phase schematic, what we call design development and construction documents, there'll be a cost estimate. Construction documents, the end of that in September is when the design is done. And then after that, we go out to bidding for contractors. So this is kind of jargon for us, this schematic design, design development, but you know, this is, we're starting the real design now. Assuming that budget is what we're working to, we have to work backwards to that budget now that it's established. So we have sort of a draft program that we were working with when we last talked to you. We have to finalize that, and part of finalizing that is we have to do layouts of each floor of the building. When we do layouts, that's when we can confirm kind of frankly what fits. I don't think everybody's gonna get everything they had hoped for out of this project, but we can get a pretty nice building and a lot of, we can certainly meet all your needs for the $53 million. The only question is, how far into the future does that take you before you do another capital project? And we don't know the answer to that, but we'll come back at the next meeting with some schematic layouts that fit within the budget, the envelope that we have, the building envelope, the total square footage, and then roughly on the budget too, to just kind of show everybody. So I just want to temper expectations that you might not get everything, or certain things might have to be tightened up. And I don't know what those are yet, so I don't want to speculate until we get here and roughly a month from now, which would be that workshop that's listed as February 21st. So February 21st, we'll come back with initial layouts of each department, and we'll come back with a revised program that matches those layouts. And that's when I think we can really have kind of a roll-up-the-sleeves workshop, and we'll take you floor by floor, department by department, to show you what each function in the building looks like, and the square footage they need, and you know, what does the jury assembly look like? How many courtrooms do we have at the end of the day? How many are large? How many are small? What do those courtrooms look like? So I think we'll have to workshop the courtrooms a little bit. We'll probably want to, on that same trip, meet with the judges and bring up some layouts and diagrams of the courtrooms. There's many options as to how to lay out a courtroom. How many spectators do you have? Do you have a center bench, a corner bench? How many litigant tables do you have in there? Confirm how many jury and non-jury courtrooms, which ones have holding access, which ones don't. So there's a lot to kind of go through in this next couple of months that we really have to dig into. So the first meeting, the next meeting I should say, February 21st, is kind of program and layouts. March 14th, and these dates, we just put these here. They may not work with you, we'll change them, but we just wanted to put something on paper to just get a rhythm and some momentum going. And we can always, you know, fine tune those dates around your schedule. We come back on March 14th with revised layouts, but we'll also start to have that sort of first blush as to what the building might look like. Now, it's your building, not our building, and when we start that conversation, there's gonna be a lot of differences of opinion as to what folks, I just know it because every project is like that, what it might look like. So I think we'll come back with some precedence about what other courthouses look like around the region and around the country. Very traditional, very modern, what we call transitional, there's a whole range of architectural vernaculars. And we also have to keep that in context with the budget. We're not doing a building out of marble and granite, we know that, but we also want to do a building that's pretty durable and dignified looking. So we'll talk a little bit about what those materials might be. And hopefully have some very sketchy renderings of the various range of architectural vernaculars I just mentioned, or at least some good examples so that we can have a real good conversation on or around March 14th. Then in April, presumably we'll get some direction. We might not get complete consensus, but ultimately, some decision has to get made about the general look and feel of this building by the commissioners. So there'll be another meeting on or around April 4th, that's about three weeks later. Assuming we get some direction or multiple directions on the 14th, we can do some more explorations and come back on April 4th and show you some kind of new updated and thoughts on what the building might look like. I think we'll do a temperature check on the costs as well. We might even do that sooner, actually. I think more likely on the meeting of the 14th, we'll do just a temperature check on the budget.
Yeah, just a question. Are these, are these dates in this being spread out over this period of time, is that aggressive, or is this just kind of standard? Because I'd like to be more aggressive than this if we can.
Well, it's pretty aggressive. We need time for us to do our work, so if the next meeting is a month, four weeks, we have a lot of work to do in four weeks. But also, we want time for you to digest what we give you at each meeting. So this is, I'm gonna say this is, fits with our very standard three-month schedule for schematic. So that's pretty, I'm gonna say that's standard, and it's not slow. It's on the aggressive side. I mean, and we do need decisions, and I just know that that will take some time, but we keep working while you're, so we're gonna leave you with stuff at each meeting, and you can meet and talk and discuss after we go away. We're gonna keep working, but each of these meetings has some direction or decision that we need to get from this group. But we're gonna keep working. So I think it's a fair and reasonable schedule. I think if people can make these dates work, plus or minus a day or three, that I think it's, I think it's aggressive if we can stay on this three months and we get those timely decisions. Obviously, the biggest one is site. I didn't even get to that conversation yet, but I think that's kind of the second part of this meeting is to talk about site. Because we don't have a confirmed site yet, and we're starting design without a site, which, so we can work fast, but we need that, we need a site. And we can, we can move a little bit in the next couple of weeks, we can get to the next meeting without, I think, a confirmed site, because really we're confirming who's in the building, we know who's in the building, how much square footage everybody's getting, rough footprint of the building, we kind of have that rough, we'll have it more fine-tuned. That we can do for the next couple of weeks, but then we can't keep moving if we don't have a final decision on site. So I wanted to park that, I want to have that discussion today, I just wanted to go through the rest of the schedule, and then our agenda really does include, I think, Agenda Item Four, which is right after I finish this timeline, we'll get into the site discussion.
Can I ask you this?
Sure.
With regard to determining whether this is aggressive or not, when do you intend to start construction?
Well, this has us, if we can stay on the schedule and we get a very relatively quick decision on site, because that will be the biggest thing that'll affect the schedule, but if we get that, I guess what, I'm gonna turn a little bit to Dave, but if we complete our drawings the end of September, what, two months bidding maybe, and then maybe break around November, that's, and that, again, that's based on this schedule and some quick decisions. So we could be in the ground in November if we, if all goes as we hope.
So the intent of this learned group here is, this construction season, we would start?
First identify ourselves, Dick Strasburg with Tegra. I think the thing we really want to caution on is setting a construction start date right now, because we don't know what the building's made out of yet. And given lead times, if it's pre-cast concrete, or if it's steel, or, you know, we gotta get further to it before we can really identify exactly when it will start. And right now, we want the flexibility to really get into the budget and say what makes the most sense from a budget perspective, and then we can kind of back into the schedule. The thing that's different on it now, which I think some of you are pretty aware of, is it used to be you could design a project, bid it, and then start construction. Right now, it's not that way. It's, you know, switch gear right now, Dave, is what?
Opinion on what it is, anywhere from 50 to 80 weeks.
50 to 80 weeks, to get electrical switch gear.
To get materials.
Yeah, to get materials.
Okay, well, that's a good point.
So a lot of this is, so that's why we gotta, you know, and the construction we want to do is, when we start it, we want to go, run it efficiently, and be done. And so it's a real, it's a real challenge right now in the industry with the supply chain, to really figure out what is that optimum construction schedule? So that's why I kind of jump in on the schedule on saying we gotta get into the design a little bit.
Right.
And then there'll be a lot of discussion on it, as you guys will be involved in.
Right, Dick, and that's why I'm asking what the consensus here is, is it this construction season or not? Because if it was this construction season, we may be, we may want to be more aggressive, but if the lead time is 50 to 80 weeks, and it's not, it's next construction season.
I think it's next construction season, I'll speak today.
We have time to make these decisions.
Yeah, and something else I throw out there too, if I had a whiteboard, I'd draw this, but your ability to affect the project right now is very high. The next three months is where you're gonna make most of your decisions, and after that, it's your ability to affect it starts getting pretty low. You can pick out the paint colors, you know, you got things to decide in the future, but these first three months, if there's anything we want to speed up, it's not this. We want to carefully do this, do a thorough job, make sure we're doing, making all the decisions you're gonna live with for the next, you know, 50-plus years. And this, the next three months are when you're gonna be making most of those decisions. Then it gets into design development, now you're starting to, you know, get more into the engineering, more into the, you know...
Building system.
Building systems and stuff like that, so. So I think that, our recommendation, at least to start with, we use this three months, and that's pretty standard on a building like this, to take three months. Sometimes it takes longer, but we're trying to push it, so I think three months is the right, right amount of time to go through this first step.
Right, three months is typical if we have a site. So that's why three months is ideal if we get that site decision soon. As for the supply chain issue, thank you for correcting me on that, but maybe that'll be even part of our discussion when we talk about what the building looks like and what materials we use, is partially what's available and how quickly it's available. So we might want to have a particular material that we would typically use, but if that's the 90-week material, we'll have to start thinking about what the alternative is for that. So again, the supply chain issue does, is a relatively recent thing that kind of changes our, how our industry's working, at least temporarily. So we'll have, yeah, we'll have to include that as a key part of our discussions. And that's only materials. In terms of structural steel and stuff like that, it is what it is, I guess. So we can't, you know, we have to have a lot of those materials that are part of the basic structure of the building.
Yeah, I think the only thing else I'd mention is, is the intent, we're gonna identify bid packages, so there's gonna be some early bid packages that we can get out the door. It's not gonna be, you know, April, but it might be, you know, June, July, August, something like that, where we can get an early bid package out for some site clearing or some foundations, things like that. So there's gonna be things we can happen this year. It's just not, you know, in April, when the ground thaws, constructions start.
Okay, so, so we kind of went through this, I think we will need to kind of figure out who comes to each of these meetings, or is, because we will, at the next meeting, we will want to talk to the building users, whether it's a single workshop like this, or whether we meet with you first and then we go sit with them. But we do need to talk to the judges about courtroom layout and design. We need to, you know, talk to Bill about his operation and the state's attorney, confirm offices, workstations, conference rooms. Similarly, the sheriff is kind of a big deal to make sure we've got the holding cells right, and we've got the site and sound separation, we've laid it out in a way that he can work efficiently. We have clear access from the detainee vehicles who pull into the Sallyport, who go to the holding cells, move them directly through secure corridors to the detainee elevators that go up through the building to the courtrooms. We're gonna lay all that out, but then we have to review that all with the sheriff to make sure that it meets with his operational needs, it's staff efficient, it's, again, like I mentioned, site and sound, there's other kind of standards and best practices that have to be met in designing the holding space. So, and then you even mentioned buildings and ground, so, or maintenance. So we've got to even talk to them, do we have the storage, is the trash recycling area gonna work for them, the loading dock, we have an exterior loading dock we're thinking of, you know, did we get that right? So we have a lot of that that has to be vetted through each of the building users, once we've kind of agreed on what's in the building and how many staff and, you know, so that's really what we hope to do in February. So, you know, I think it's, it might be more than one meeting, it might be a day of meetings. And in terms of each of these key milestones, I guess if it's a commissioner meeting like this, we can do that and then have sort of the breakout meetings with the various user groups. So that's how we envisioned the, I'm gonna say the next three months, which is really what I wanted to focus on. And then one question is, you don't have to answer it now, but I know there's the advisory group that you wanted to keep apprised, when do they, you know, when do we present to them? We kind of proposed, once we've kind of understood, and you've all given us direction and accepted X number of courtrooms, big ones, small ones, you know, this is how much growth we're accommodating for the different functions, and that we're on budget, it's, the building is a certain size, then maybe that's the appropriate time to go to the advisory group, once they're clear on that. You know, talking about what the building looks like, generally we'd think we'd have a first discussion with you before we go to them, but you know, you tell us how you want to include them, and when you want to include them. So we just put something on here for advisory group, we can revise this after this meeting based on, one, dates that you're available, and two, if you want to, you know, add or delete different meetings that we could be, or groups we could be meeting with.
Going back to timing and sequencing, when do you need to know from us where the location is, what the location is going to be? And tomorrow is probably not an acceptable answer, so...
Right, but I'm gonna say, you know, to stay on this schedule, I'm gonna probably say by the next meeting. Obviously, we'd like it sooner, so, but by the next meeting, we're gonna come up with a generic, we're gonna come up with layouts, because the program isn't generic, it's your program for your users. The footprint will be, will probably be, given the kind of sites we've been talking about, they're not like constrained urban sites, so I'm kind of thinking we can be generic probably up to the February meeting, but at that point, I think we really are gonna have to have some direction.
When you say next meeting, do you mean next week?
Next month.
Or February 21st?
February 21st.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's say a month, and after that, it could be slowing down the project, so...
Now, I see on your design task bar here, it says study options for site selection, January 23rd to February 17th, 3.8 weeks.
Right.
What does that entail, and how does that apply to this commission's decision to determine a site?
So if we have more than one site to look at, or more than one location on a particular site, and that's what I think we were gonna talk about next, we would be spending the next four weeks doing that while we're also developing this layout. We'll be doing site studies, if you tell us even today what to start looking at, we'll be doing that. But again, that kind of fits with my comment that at the end of the four weeks, we would come back, and if it's three sites, here are the three site options, here's how they lay out, here's how we recommend, the front door, how they front, how you get through the back, where the parking is, where the expansion space is. We would do those studies in the next four weeks, come back to you with that. And again, that's when we, at that point, like a selection. If you can't make that selection in four weeks, based on those studies, I guess it'd probably impact the schedule. It may not, I mean, if you can make it in six weeks, not a big deal. If it's three months, it's kind of a big deal, so, on the schedule.
Commissioner Poppins?
I just wanted to verify, you had indicated we might be talking about that site conditions, otherwise I have some questions concerning that. I don't want to interrupt your...
Well, so if you, I'm trying, do we have anything else? I mean, just Commissioner Aaron, so if we quickly go through that section on, so the space program, since you brought it up, and we'll just finish this section here on the schedule, and then we'll move on to the specific sites. Yeah, so next four weeks would be us studying sites that, that we know have already been talked about, and we would put them up on the screen and see if we're even still talking about them, or if you have something else you want to give us. During that time, we're also finalizing the space program. And the space program really is gonna get finalized through layouts, that's why we need the user input. Normally, we have a very sequential thing where we vet out this program and detail every space, every square footage with the users before we start design. We're already fast-tracking because we haven't had that full detailed deep dive with the users. That's okay. We'll do it while we also have layouts in front of them. Frankly, it's easier for people to understand space when they see a layout than when they just see a spreadsheet of numbers. So we're fine with that, it happens simultaneously.
If I may interrupt, the question I have is, so everyone's aware, the initial, what was probably considered the leading contender is an option that does not look like it's gonna come to fruition. So we may need to revisit, what is our minimum, maximum, what are requirements, what needs to be, what does a site need to be?
Right.
So that we can move forward.
Love to have that discussion.
So, because if that is a critical thing to get done, we need to go back, unfortunately, and look at what is our minimum size, access, those types of things, what things do we have to take in consideration as we look at potentially other sites that might be available?
We're happy to jump into that now, if you're ready to...
I don't want to interrupt you.
Move off the schedule.
We're gonna save site discussions initially for executive session.
Okay.
We don't want it to affect any bargaining position that we might have.
Not site-specific, but the general conditions is what I'm curious of what we need to be looking for, so...
You wanna come up, Mr. Golden?
We could always break now, go into executive session, you could ask the specifics, because I do think it goes into negotiations.
That, that's my concern, and I agree with you.
So we could have those conversations then.
I don't want to do that at this point, we can do that in executive session.
Okay.
So if somebody, if somebody, if we want to go there and somebody wants to make a motion to go into executive session, I'd consider that.
Madam Chair, I have, I have the same concerns as you. I understand we don't want to compromise the county's ability to negotiate, but I think what I'm hearing from Commissioner Poppins, and I'm curious about the question too, and I think it's important to have in public, is without discussing any particular site, you know, the corner of 7th and Main, can we at least get out of the architect here and open session some of these issues about timing, sequencing, site conditions, some of those things? some of those things?
I think we've had some conversations about whether it's thirty acres, whether it's twenty acres, whether it's ten acres.
That's what I would like to actually go, Madam Chair, before we go into exec, just broad, how many acres do we actually have to have? What conditions do that, does a site have to have to be conducive?
I guess if we went to just an absolute minimum, probably doesn't hurt us. But what we actually want and what we're going to do should probably be a discussion in executive session.
I agree.
So.
So I think if somebody wants to go into executive session, we could, we'll come out, we can ask questions and do stuff in open meeting, but initially, I'd like to go into executive session.
We, when, I assume with executive session, we're going to ask Rob to attend and answer your questions.
I would ask.
And we can come out at that point and decide what you want to be public.
I would ask Rob and Mr. Strasburg and Dave to come in with us. And whether that's one at a time or together, that's fine, but I think initially, we should go into executive session, so it's clear, I guess, for the commission, what discussions have already been had, and those are appropriate for executive session.
At least we can hammer out what's the details and what you're comfortable with having in public.
I guess I'm comfortable with the public understanding, what is our minimum requirement versus our maximum, but if the board chooses to have that conversation in executive, you know, I won't be voting for that specific question to be in executive session. I think if we looked at a specific site and what could be acquired at that site, absolutely, but I think we're talking pretty general terms at this point.
Madam Chair, for the record, I would move for executive session, including those individuals that you have articulated.
Thank you. And Bill, is that subsection?
JL, JT.
One, two, three, four.
It'd be three under contract.
Okay. Is that the motion, Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay. And then do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. We call the roll, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Madam Chair.
Got a motion and a second, Sean, we follow the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right. Any, any further discussions on courthouse design or action for today?
I think the one thing we'd want to discuss is making sure we have the, all the departments included in the courthouse.
Hasn't that been outlined by?
I don't, I'm not sure if I'm following you when you say departments, like who's going to be in there?
Yes.
That's going to, I think, just speaking initially, we've been talking, when the courthouse opens, we would like to have three large working courtrooms, and then three smaller-sized courtrooms. And maybe the size of those smaller courtrooms varies, they maybe aren't all cookie cutter. And then depending on what that looks like and projected cost for doing that, that's going to lead us into a discussion of what other departments are going to be there. I mean, ideally, we would like a state's attorney's presence there. Perhaps the civil side of the state's attorney's office stays here in the administrative building, and the criminal is over there. But again, it's going to be, depending on cost. And then obviously, the sheriff's office needs a presence over there, and they're going to need some holding cells. So you'll want to talk to them about, you know, what they actually would need for holding cells over there. And then it's my understanding a Sallyport was included with all of that.
Correct, yep. And then I guess we'll have, obviously, the court support, so clerk of courts, court services, those type of program spaces.
Sure.
Any, go through the list. Large, small, state's attorney.
We will, we'll need, obviously, a county IT presence over there of some sort, space for them.
Yeah, there's support functions that included.
Court, court will have its own IT. The court functions are separate from the county functions, so maybe they can house together, but maybe they can't.
So, I mean, in our initial program, while we had jury assembly, by the way, we had court services and clerk, but I assume you included all that with the courts. And then, yeah, we had a pro se center, which I think people still want, self-represented center. Not big, but it's, it's in there.
Would that be, you know, like, are you talking a law library with access for pro se litigants?
Yeah, I mean, basically, law libraries are being converted to pro se, because people don't really read books anymore. But yes, you get access to Westlaw and Lexis and all of that on computers, and you can kind of guide people to help them do that, so.
I think by statute, we have to have the law library. That's what we have to call it.
We'll call it a law library slash pro se, and we'll put books on the shelf, but nobody's going to read the books.
I don't even know if there needs to be books, but.
It looks nicer that way anyways.
Right.
But yeah, so that, that would be in there. I mean, we have a modest space for that. It's not big. What else do we have in there? An attorney suite, we talked about, and no decision was made, is for outside attorneys and/or public defender, and I know that was sort of an open topic. So we were going to carry some space, again, at this point, it's pretty small, but seven or eight hundred square feet, to at least have that. I think you should have it regardless of whether you decide the public defender will be assigned to that space or not, just to have.
I think, you know, obviously, you want the courts involved in this. You're going to have your jury deliberation rooms. If we're not moving the state's attorney's office over there, if there's jury trials going on, I mean, there's going to need to be some mid-sized conference room or areas where during a jury trial, whether it's a defense attorney or the state, they're going to need to go, so they don't have to drive back to their office or come back here. They kind of need a, I guess we call it a war room when I have a state's attorney.
I mean, there's already two conference rooms that we're thinking of providing per courtroom, and so for just going for the trial, they have a place to hang out, whether those would actually permanently get assigned to public defender or so, you can actually do that, because sometimes they don't even get used, so.
Right, I think like if you look at the Minnehaha County courthouse, and maybe the courts would tell you differently, on each floor, in between the courtrooms, there are some smaller rooms with a small table for anywhere from, you know, four to six people to meet or hang out in and talk, and they're column attorney-witness rooms. To me, those work fine over there, just being on the outside, you know, using those facilities for smaller-type hearings and what have you, but I don't know that they're ideal for a larger-type trial. Bill, did you want to say something?
So when I was having a hearing, and Judge Howman was the judge, she asked some questions about this, and I told her what you're thinking about as far as the three courtrooms, and she confirmed that.
Right.
Told her also that state attorney's office might not be out in the building. She was not a fan of that, because that's going to cause problems with their scheduling if we're not in the building.
And I, and I understand that, and that's why I'm saying, I think maybe the criminal, we'd like some presence there for criminal, civil maybe would hang back here. I mean, we're going to have to cut corners with space, probably, but I agree. I mean, I would prefer to see the state's attorney's office over there. If you've ever went over to, you know, arraignment court or court hearings, and even here, there is a hefty amount of materials that have to go up over to the courtroom. That would be, it doesn't make sense to have to transport that all every time.
So let us do our studies on that. I mean, the state's attorney was envisioned to occupy future court expansion space. So we're now talking six courtrooms from opening day. We hope to get to twelve, we may only get to ten, but, you know, if we're going to work within the building envelope that fits within the fifty-three million, let's see how much space that future expansion is and how much state's attorney we can fit in, all of it, some of it. Let's do those studies and see what works.
That makes sense, and then even in talking about it, and I think with you, Bill, if you have the, you know, judges' chambers as they wrap around those courtrooms, whatever that looks like, to carry that down on the second floor, if that's going to be state's attorney's space, so that there would be minimal reconstruction for court, judge offices versus state's attorney's offices, if there was going to be some kind of conversion, so that there would be a cost savings there if we were going to do that.
That's a, that's a thought, yeah.
So anyway, that's what we had talked about. I don't know if it makes sense or not, but. Anybody else have questions or comments to give the architects some, somewhere to start with design phase? All right, anybody else have any input they want to give today?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I give a report, not necessarily on building, but on a piece of legislation that we were involved in today? Representative Otten had a bill in front of the legislature calling for counties to be able to levy up to a half-cent sales tax for capital outlay on buildings for courthouses and jails. It had a thorough hearing, it was defeated. Representative from Canton, Kevin Jensen, voted no. Representative, I can never pronounce the young man's name.
Karen Goward.
Yes, voted no. Both of those are from Lincoln County, and they referred that to the forty-first date, so the bill died. But it had a lot of good support, but it didn't pass muster. Okay.
All right, thank you for that, Commissioner. We do have an opportunity for public comment on our agenda. Anybody in the audience want to come up and speak? All right, if not, I'd move on and request a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, we're adjourned.